All right. Good afternoon. 4:00 PM, Tuesday, October 10th. Special City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. We'll bypass roll call. All council members are present with Council Person Myers on the phone. Purpose of our meeting. Item A, consideration of emergency ordinance 2023-01, an ordinance providing emergency procedures permitting residents near breach inlet to install sandbags on a temporary basis for emergency erosion control. In your packet is a sample ordinance, Desiree or Douglas, I don't know who wants to kind of walk us through.
Yes, and if I may ask, before I walk us through the proposed ordinance, this obviously came as a result of an emergency condition down the south end of the island near breach inlet, and I think it would be appropriate to provide an update on the work that has gone so far, the work that is planned to begin. So I've asked Stephen to provide us information to that end, and some information based on the surveying that they have conducted in the past week to identify how much sand we've been able to mobilize and how much sand is staying put. So I think if that is okay with the group, we'd like to start with that, and then I'll go over the changes or the proposed ordinance changes.
Perfect. Stephen, thanks again for joining us.
Yeah, I'll try to keep this pretty short to get to the business, but we had a pretty good week this past week. We had the weather finally turned out in the northeast, and we had some winds coming from inland, so we've had much better wave conditions, much better tide conditions. So Collins has been able to establish a dune line extending across the entire area all the way up to Fourth Avenue. That dune is generally being, holding up pretty well during the tides along the entire area. There's some places where the water's still getting up to the dune during these even low tide tides, but it's not taking the sand away. So as far as the dune goes, they've got, we're estimating a little over 10,000 yards that they've moved so far. They are mobilizing another truck, where we're borrowing the sand from, it's holding up very well, so we're keeping a close eye on that area. As long as that is stable and we're not seeing any erosion from kind of that corner, we're going to try to deal with it on that because it's the fastest way to move sand, it's the cheapest way to move sand, and it's kind of important right now. Everything we're doing, we have kind of the next spring tide event in the back of our minds, which is expected towards the end of October. So we're trying to get as much dune restoration in the sand, but in front of that area as we can. And then as we get into the sandbag effort, trying to get a significant portion of that completed by the time that this tide's hit. So the sandbag operation, which was just approved, will likely start this weekend. They have to truck sand to the breach inlet access, build the bags there, and do those individually around to the front beach, so it will take a little while. But they're hoping to start that this weekend and start actually deploying the sandbags early in midweek next week.
Stephen, that'll be on the ones that were in the 20-foot line?
Correct. That'll essentially be the area from...
120 to 206.
Thank you, Douglas. Yes, just within the 20-foot area that I certainly need that for.
And before you go to the next bullet point, I just wanted to update you all. After Tuesday's meeting, when council approved $250,000 for the installation of sandbags in this area, the city's procurement code allows the city to not go through any competitive procurement process for expediency purposes. However, we reached out to multiple contractors and informally requested proposals for this work. We opened bids here on Monday at noon. Both contractors who submitted proposals were here. We received a bid of $149,000 from Collins Construction, and the other company, Blue Tide, submitted a bid of $250,000. So we're going forward with a contract with Collins for this work. Just wanted to update you all.
Thank you.
Colin's already on site, is that the point?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
John?
Steve, can I ask a question about the time? I know you guys, you said you have your eye on this next spring tide, and you think you can get majority of it in there. Does that mean that you'll be able to get majority of, in addition to the sandbags, the majority of the roughly 50,000 cubic yards that we talked about bringing in?
Yeah, so I think we'll be getting fairly close to that. By bringing in another truck, we'll double our production essentially. And then we're also today have gone ahead and told Collins to start trucking in sand from the inland source too, to try to supplement and speed up the delivery a little bit. Again, my preference would be to limit that to the amount we can, just because of the cost, the sediment quality, the impacts of the actual trucks. You know, they're estimating somewhere between, you know, somewhere around 50 trucks a day or so, so it's going to be a little less than 1,000 yards a day that would be trucking from the inland source. I thought it might be higher than that, but talking with them, one of the constraints they're going to have is that access isn't very big to be able to stockpile sand for the sanddine operation, and also stockpile sand for the trucking operation as well. So they're going to be a little bit spaced a little bit with that. But all that's supposed to be going next week, and may even start the inland trucking as early as this weekend. That's not a very long mobilization for them. So we'll see a lot of activity considering that down there. Overall, the conditions are pulling up well. But that last point, the weather conditions really are more important than the tides. And we talk about spring tides a lot, but it's the northeast winds, the onshore winds that coincide with those high tide levels that really do the damage to the dune. So if we get to the end of October and we have weather like we had this week, things should look really good. If it gets stuck on another, you know, 10, 7 to 10-day period of northeast winds, we're likely to be back in that eruvial pattern, and that's why I think it's important to go ahead and keep moving forward with the sandbag issue because we don't want to just rely on, you know, the sand that we're bringing in as well. I'll show you just a little bit of data on what's going on, why we think some of the erosion is occurring. As I mentioned there, I feel like the conditions are getting a little bit better, and that's not just looking at the dune, but looking at the intertidal beach area. If you look at the blue arrow where it says accretional bar, there's an intertidal sandbar, original Ronald system, that's, looks like it's working its way up the beach, so that's part of a natural beach recovery. So I do feel like that area, and that's kind of the northern half, starting at about Second Avenue, maybe a little south of Second Avenue, come over here. But up from here up, that's that accretional bar. So that's adding sand to the upper beach over time. It may still take a couple of weeks for that to move all the way up the beach, but that's a positive thing. It wasn't there a couple of weeks ago. There is a gap in the bar that I think this next photo shows. And you can see where that yellow arrow is. There's just a small gap in the bar, which is a natural feature as waters try and leave on that current or come in on the flood current, it's going to try to find a path through the delta, and that's the location it chose. And you can see the erosional arc on the beach on the lee of that pole. So right here is that erosional arc. So that's a temporary thing that will shift, but that's why that particular spot, and it's affecting two or three properties there, has a little bit narrower beach than the adjacent areas. So we're going to keep an eye on that, but overall it looks like more sand is coming into that area from up coast. So I'm a little more optimistic about the, you know, outside of what we're doing, just the natural trends and setting. A couple of elevation models from the past three years to show you really big picture what's going on. This is from 2021, and the darker blues are deeper water, the yellow shades are higher shoals up to the beach. And you can see a channel cut through the inland delta here. And that was 2021. You also see that, there's a little channel right here, and that's what we call the marginal flood channel, which takes a lot of the current. Looking at 2022, and I'll kind of just flip back and forth a little bit. But you can see that the shoal extends to this offshore area, and it's also moving to the west. So 2021 to 2022. And you can also see the contours here are coming inland. So we've got from 2022 to 2023, which disappeared on me. Can you try to drag the one that says 2023 up to where we're at now? Sorry for... It's probably on the power point. Can you skip that a little first second? Scroll down that one there. Can you drag that one up?
Desiree, while we're doing this, can folks at home see the screen?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll put that up under all their files after the meeting.
That's okay, we can do it like this. But anyway, the big picture is from 2022 to 2023, we saw even more of a shift in those contours. So we saw an extension of the channel, which was cut through here, is now shifting to the west. This whole system is kind of moving this direction, and at the same time, those contours of the beach are coming closer to the beach. That's the process that's controlling the beach condition right now. And just like we saw in 2021, at some point in the next couple of years, a new channel will cut through somewhere in here. I can't tell you where or when, but at some point, a new channel will cut through there, and we'll start the cycle again. When that does happen, I expect it to kind of back some sand up temporarily, and we'll get some, hopefully get some accretion out of it. We did, we've done some very limited surveys to try to quantify how the dune condition's holding up over the next couple of weeks, or the past week, and we'll continue to do this to see what beach condition looks like. I'm going to reference some stations, 400, 800, 1200, and a couple more, but you can kind of see if you're interested in a certain property or area where those are. And these are going to be a little messy and short, but I want to basically show is the black line is today, we're out there surveying today. The blue line is where we were in August, and then the red line is where we were last week. So you can see at this particular station, which is 116 Ocean Boulevard, the dune line shifted up about 20 feet, about eight feet tall, and we're actually getting some accretion in that upper part of the beach. That's what I wanted to see throughout this effort is when we're putting sand out there, is it staying in this area, or is it immediately just going in a different direction? Some of these have very limited data, and you only see a little bit, and you have to kind of take into account what was done. But as we go through, at 128 Ocean Boulevard, the dune line appears to be set back, but it's actually, that was based off the September condition. We didn't have a line from last week right there, so it's lost sand since September, but we're better off than we were last week. I'm going to jump ahead to this one and basically just point out one thing here. This is right at the 200 access to the lots in the north that have the exposed pools. What we're seeing out here is where we're getting a lot of accretion in that lower end of tidal zone. That's that bar that's moving up, and that's what I think is going to destabilize the beach.
Steve, is that 202? Oh, that's 202, oh, 202, okay.
Yeah, that's right at the boundary, 202. So we're going to keep doing this over the next couple of weeks to try to see how the beach is evolving, and hopefully get a little bit better data as we're going. So this takes, we've got a nice dune forming there, and then 210, again, you see that same low tide increase there compared, that's compared to August, so that's more coming since August, but it's kind of some messy data. And that's, that's all the data, and so I'm happy to answer any questions on the condition update.
Well, is the, is your progression over the years of the inlet pertinent to the discussion we're going to have on B, which is the, you know, the potential with dredging that, if the root cause is really that inlet is a dredge or opening that inlet, a potential to alleviate this erosion, especially in light of fact, we're going to do a major risk beach nourishment, and if that's the root cause and doesn't change, it's just going to continually erode that away. So is that, I mean, I'm jumping ahead, but is that, are those slides relevant to what the discussion's going to be?
I think this one may be relevant, it's pulled up now.
Okay, all right.
So Desiree, you want to shift back to the ordinance?
Yes. So I'll go over at a high level what this ordinance includes and be available for any questions as we go along, or maybe wait until the end. But essentially, in page two, we incorporate the requirements for temporary sandbag installation, and this emergency ordinance would, as we had discussed, would be temporary and would only apply to front beach properties that are with between 100 Ocean Boulevard and 914 Ocean Boulevard. And this is the...
Nine or three?
914. And the reason we are expanding this past the current emergency condition area, which is 314 Ocean, is the scope of the project for the Army Corps that we're anticipating completing by, or starting early next year, extends past Third, it goes up to about 10th Avenue. And part of the purpose and goal of this, of this ordinance is allow property owners to be proactive. So we know that that area is very close to the area that's erosional and giving the opportunity to property owners that are past that to be able to take proactive measures if they, if they want to, ahead of potential future erosion. The requirement for the installation of temporary sandbags and requirements include getting an emergency permit from the city, and there are certain conditions that are required of the property owners in order to get an emergency permit from the city. And those include coordinating with OCRM on the delineation of the line wherever they claim jurisdiction, because that's going to be essentially the line that they're going to be looking, looking landward for the installation of, of these sandbags. So the proposed ordinance includes, includes that coordination. That's going to be the responsibility of the property owner to do that with, with OCRM. The sandbags would need to be placed parallel to the shoreline, not perpendicular. They're limited to a maximum height of six feet, and that is measured at the bottom of, of the trench. They have to be stacked at an angle no steeper than 45 degrees, installed in a trench at a depth equivalent to the bottom of the existing escarpment. And then property owners would be able to install that, those sandbags in a trench at least 15 feet landward of the escarpment line. Section E requires the...
Can I ask a question, Desiree?
Sure.
I talked to Steve a little bit before. On the 15 feet, I'm not sure where that originated from, but what if there's somebody that has, say, 30 feet left of yard, and then that brings them, that's going to require them to go 15, you know, they're going to be on the other side of the 20-foot line, or say they're at 30 feet and they've got to go in, you know, 25 feet. So where, where does that, how does that tie into the 20-foot line? And I thought at one point, we were going to kind of let OCRM and the, and the property owner kind of decide where the best optimal place. We obviously don't want to collapse the escarpment, but do we get in, do we get into a situation like we did with 250 feet, where we're trying to put a stake in the ground on some measurement, but there might be unintended consequences by, by doing that? So I talked to Steve a little bit about it. I don't know if there's any answer to that, or how that would work.
Yeah. And what I said on that was if, it really have to look at the lot-by-lot case on where the jurisdictional line is. In the example of a 30-foot scenario, once the beach eroded to that 20-foot line, regardless of any Isle of Poms ordinance, OCR's emergency condition would kick in, and they could put those bags at that 20-foot line.
But would they have to go back to OCRM for that?
Yes, they would have to have the OCRM permit for that. And I don't know if, you know, the language in the ordinance could have, you know...
Like an or clause in there?
Yeah, or clause that if, you know, beach can, you know, 15 feet or, you know, with a maximum distance of 20 feet from the structures.
That might help, yeah.
Yeah, because I think we're trying, the whole purpose of this is to allow homeowners to do something proactively during this emergency period to protect their property. And, you know, in that case, if you're saying, you know, if a property's at 30 feet, you have to, you know, you go back five, it's feet, you have to, you know, you go back, it's 15 feet from any structure before you, before this ordinance would allow them to do anything. So they're going to sit around and wait until it hits 20 feet for them then to be able to take emergency action with OCRM. That does, it seems to defeat the whole purpose of what we're trying to do this for.
Yeah, and the only reason I'm bringing that up, can I just finish my thought on that, though? The only reason I'm bringing that up is because I've seen instances where, you know, we're losing 15 feet in a night. So the reaction time to be able to do that, if the escarpment does move that quickly, there won't be any time. So, yeah.
So in that situation, though, an owner would be able to preemptively place bags where without this ordinance, they couldn't do that. So, so OCRM is not going to give any permission until the erosion line is within 20 feet. So in the scenario of it's at 30, OCRM won't grant any permission, our ordinance would allow them to be placed...
At 15.
At 15. And they, so is your point that they would be better off to wait until it's within 20 and get the permission?
I'm just trying to get a scenario where they don't lose another five feet because of their, we'd have to wait for them to get a permit or coordinate it with us and the, us and OCRM. It's that, it's that sort of that limbo 20-foot scenario. By us picking a 15-foot arbitrary, all cases, all situations, are we pinning in some potential homeowners in an instance where this escarpment's moving so fast where they could have put bags at 20 feet, they don't have to wait and put it back 15? I'm just, it's an odd one.
We don't have that kind of movement right now.
So OCRM did confirm that if, if a piece of machinery is out there, they're digging, the wall collapses, and I think this was kind of Blair's point.
That's the point.
They're, they're going to stop that project. If, if you get so close to, you've excavated and the wall collapses, their jurisdiction comes into that excavation, they're then stopped from doing it. So 15 feet was what we thought, and I think was between Mac and Stephen, the closest they could excavate and not collapse that wall.
Yeah. It's, it's based on structural properties of sand, right?
Right.
How well it could stand up. It's not arbitrary.
Correct.
Yeah, we originally were, I think you said originally 20 was probably saving. I'm like, look, the closer we can get it, the better, but I don't want, you know, we don't want the escarpments.
Two feet, yeah.
We don't want the escarpments falling in. And then the other thought, too, that Stephen brought up is if you have somebody that somehow, some way puts it right up against the escarpment, but the other neighbors are not, it's going to push the water to the neighbor's houses. So we wanted to try to at least have everybody back 15 feet.
Yeah. And I think the purpose of this is that most homeowners are not soils experts. And so we are setting a standard that's based on the, the properties of sand and how, how close you can excavate. Is that correct?
We did not do a formal analysis of that to come up with the 15 feet. It was more of a just experience working with, you know, dykes and equipment out on the beach.
Yeah.
The reality is when somebody's out there working, they're, it'll be difficult for them to only operate from one side. They'll probably, probably be on the other side, so they're going to be impacting an area on the seaward side of the bags as well. So you just kind of have to have some type of minimum. Honestly, if you're in that scenario where it's 30 or 20 feet, to me, you're, you're in basically the same situation. If we're at a property that's 80 feet and you're trying to protect, you know, a substantial amount in certain situations, especially around breach where you have a curving shoreline, you can get some pretty variable distances from houses and the high tide line.
They'll be able to put it out 65 feet, is what you're saying.
In some cases, yes.
Whereas the, yeah, the one that's close, they're going to get jammed up, yeah.
Correct.
I mean, honestly, for me, if it's 30 feet and OCRM says it's 20, you know, I'm approaching OCRM at 30 feet and saying, hey, I'm getting ready to do this as soon as it hits 25 feet, I'm essentially putting the bags in under their permit rather than paying somebody additional money to dig out sand, figure out what to do with the sand that they dug out for, you know, that much beach. The, this is just kind of a logistical nightmare for a project.
Calisthenics.
Yeah.
Do we have many qualified contractors and landscapers that can do this work? I noticed that's one of the prerequisites here, but do we know of companies that would be available to do this if, if a number of land, of property owners decide to, to go with the sandbags so that we can adequately oversee, oversee the work?
This is a project that anybody with a mini excavator could do fairly easily. You know, the caveat's finding beach compatible sand. You have to ensure that that has to come from an inland source that is beach compatible. And then...
And as this work is going on, is it overseen at all by OCRM or by the city? Has the, what progress has been made?
It would be by the city, and I'll, I'll get to that in a minute.
All right. Sorry to derail us.
While we're on this as well, in the early part, I just had one suggestion that I think is important. And under section 1C, where you say you're coordinating with OCRM and they're going to delineate into the area that will be used for the excavation, I would like to see that, that the homeowner submits a map to the city with, with appropriate location, with approximate location for us to have on file.
Yeah, so after this was submitted to y'all, OCRM provided some additional guidance to Douglas, and so we added subsection 1 and 2 under that section that just says, as, you know, they've got to coordinate with OCRM as set forth below, and the surveyor hired by the resident must mark the OCRM setback line using the coordinates under the data download tab of OCRM's beachfront jurisdictional lines viewer. At properties where the beach has eroded landward of OCRM setback line, or where unauthorized materials have been placed within OCRM's beach critical area jurisdiction, the landward limit of the beach's critical area must be marked by OCRM staff, or a surveyor must mark the landward limit of the beach's critical area using coordinates provided by OCRM.
But will there be a map?
Yeah, there, yeah, it has a link that provides them with sort of a jurisdictional map.
So it's registering that location?
That's right.
Okay, good. Otherwise, how do we know they did it properly?
Exactly.
OCRM is probably not going to check. We will.
All right, Desiree.
All right, I'll keep going. Section E requires the residence contractor to access the resident, to do the work by accessing it through the residence property. However, if that's not possible, they would need to seek approval from the city how they would be, what beach access path they would be utilizing to access and do the work on the ocean side. No solder piles or any structural members shall be used to support sandbags in place, so they can't, they can't use any, anything structurally to hold them, hold those sandbags in the trench. The sandbags shall be of one cubic yard and commercially manufactured for the purpose of holding sand. They need to be tan, off-white, or white. As Stephen mentioned earlier, the sandbag material needs to be a beach compatible sand, approved and submitted and approved by OCRM. The resident is responsible for the day-to-day maintenance of these temporary sandbags, to ensure that they're remaining in place, and if they are in disrepair, they need to be removed or replaced by the, by the resident, not by the city. Section 2 talks about the removal of these sandbags. We talked about this being temporary until the city's able to execute the project with the OCR, Army Corps of Engineers, which is expected early 2024. So it's either, you know, before the, the completion of this project, or if the city deems that they need to be removed for whatever maybe unforeseen reason at this time, the city would be issuing the resident a, a notice within, and within 45 days of receiving that notice, the resident would have to remove those sandbags. Section 3 talks about a requirement to have an escrow agreement. So this is very similar to the process that OCRM has for their approval of sandbags. They do it through a bonding, through a bond. We think it's much easier to manage administratively to require an escrow for the amount that it would cost to remove it, and that just ensures the city that the bags will be removed in accordance with the requirements of this, of this ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, quick question. So my worry is compliance, and it says that you will determine the amount held in escrow and notify the resident of that amount after the quotes come in. Any idea, any thoughts of what that escrow amount might be? 10% of the quote, 50% of the quote, 100% of the quote?
It's the, it's the quote selected for the removal, it would be the 100% of the funds.
Of the quote?
Correct.
Excellent, okay.
Which we would range, I think, talking with Stephen, around 10,000, maybe could be less, maybe could be more.
To, for removal? To, for removal?
Yeah. More the better. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then section three, temporary sandbag count and maintenance prior to the installation, all bags need to be counted, recorded, and approved by the city. And we would keep documentation about that and their condition throughout the, throughout the next few months until the, the bags need to be removed, either by notice of the city or by virtue of the execution of the Army Corps of Engineers project. I think that's it from a sort of big picture item. I know we, oh, section four, the suspension of, of our local provisions. This reiterates that the sandbags are approved. However, no seawall or revetment or bulkhead would be allowed under the provisions of this emergency ordinance. So this is reiterating that it's only sandbags that are authorized as to be placed within this area.
What does the city do if a homeowner just says, no, I'm not removing it? Do we have an easement? Do we have something in place that allows us to go on their private property and dig up their sandbags?
This, well, this ordinance, one, allows us to do it. So if they receive a permit, we would be permitted to do that. And we would have their funds in escrow. And there's also other provisions in here that say, to the extent, you know, you access the public beach access and damage it, if, you know, if the escrow funds aren't enough, you agree to reimburse us for cost expenses, attorney's fees, et cetera. So that's all authorized in here.
And Desiree, I mean, today is the tenth, so we're really talking eight, twelve, I mean, if Army Corps project starts early January, I mean, we're talking twelve-ish weeks that we're allowing this temporary situation.
Right.
If approved, yes.
If approved and if the Army Corps starts, yeah.
If there is a delay in the Army Corps of Engineers project, we don't know, we don't anticipate it at this time. But it would, it would be in place until that project is in place.
But we would have to address it again in the sixty-first day, right? Each time? I mean, we would have to renew?
That's correct.
You'd be, you'd be allowed to place them for sixty days with the adoption, but you wouldn't have, you would, you would then have to remove them. If they were placed in the sixty days, you would then have the time of the Army Corps project to remove them. So if, if not everybody had placed them within this sixty days, you could consider an additional follow-on to allow other owners who wanted to place it after this first pass.
Yeah. Again, in theory, we're, we'd be out of hurricane season at that point, out of king tide, at least printed tide tables. Kevin?
Do we have a, a feeling or an idea of how many properties are wanting to do this?
I do not. I have, I have not heard folks clamoring to do it. And part of it is, I've wondered, I've wondered how many people will actually choose to do it. I don't know that it'll be a large number.
Yeah.
Don't think it will.
I think there is a general desire by some of the property owners that are in that area to be able to have the ability to do something proactively and not have to wait until they're, they meet emergency conditions to get an emergency permit for sandbags. So I think some folks are seeing what's happened in other, in, you know, to other properties down there and want to be able to do something. And our current ordinance does not allow for that.
Yeah. And so to your point, I mean, it really is just an emergency for ten, twelve weeks, give or take.
And it's restricted to this area, restricted to breach inlet and nights. It's not...
With a fair amount of provisions as outlined.
And, and those provisions that we think protect the city and I think are in the city's best interest.
What I was hearing, my sense of what was happening with comments and social media and stuff like that was the, the residents were concerned that we weren't acting fast enough. And they wanted, they might want to take things into their own hands. So this gives them that opportunity if they so choose. But I think we're acting fast enough and will probably would not be necessary. But it sort of gets peace of mind.
And I think just to also keep in mind, the city is doing what it's permitted to do. This is under OCRM jurisdiction. So we are only allowed to do the work that we're approved to do by this state. We can, we can do so much.
Yeah.
Just a general comment as well, that kind of when the staff started on this process, we, we really started with OCRM to be sure we weren't going to run afoul of anything that they, you know, any of their intents or purposes. Also talked to the Coastal Conservation League about how they would see this type of arrangement in the South Carolina Environmental Law Group. Everybody, you know, and as Desiree has said, this very much follows the OCRM kind of mold. It's just we're allowing it on our side of the line. That, because of the temporary nature, the, the fact that it was kind of a proven track record with OCRM of this process working, I think that put everybody's mind at rest that, you know, we're not opening the barn door for seawalls or revetments. And it made, it made the broader community comfortable with the direction that we're considering here.
Thank you. Yeah. For government, I think we've been moving at light speed personally. This is one person's view. Are there questions, comments?
Were we voting?
Getting ready to.
All right.
Is there a motion?
Is there going to be discussion after that?
Can.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
So move, a move that we adopt the ordinance. Do you want to say the word?
Did we modify it as modified?
As modified.
Yeah, as amended, including provisions clarifying the...
OCRM surveying.
OCR, OCRM surveying of their jurisdictional law.
So we got a motion?
I'll second it.
There's a second? Further discussion. Mr. Hahn?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that this, this ordinance in theory is good. I think in practice, it's very problematic. It goes against OCRM practice and policy as well as all, all other agencies. They don't want any type of structure on the beach because any structure on the beach interferes with the natural progression of the beach going back and forth. If any bags are placed pursuant to this ordinance, what happens when the tide reaches those placed bags? We now have a horizontal line of bags, and we're going to have pooling on either side. So unless the neighbors on both sides did the same thing and lined it up at the same area, we have a mess on our hands. And the question then becomes, and the, and the resident will come screaming to us, I got to put wings on, on my bags. We're not going to allow that, I would hope. OCRM ain't going to allow that for, for sure. And it would then be OCRM jurisdiction. So now we just have a mess and we don't know how to deal with it. Councilman Pierce said unintended consequences. Absolutely. We got a lot of unintended consequences with doing this. And we need to be mindful of the precedent that we are setting by passing an ordinance that is only for a specific number of residents. And we need to be mindful of our own duty to all island property owners and not just a select few. So for those reasons, I cannot support this.
Any response on the OCRM commentary? Or, I mean, because we've certainly been coordinating with them.
I don't think we've talked about that specific scenario. And from an engineering perspective, Stephen, do you, in, in the scenario where he's talking about that the erosion reaches the location where those sandbags are, and then you probably have a pooling scenario on both sides, how, how should that be addressed?
Yeah, that, that's a difficult situation that could arise. And, you know, trying to foresee what the real world looks like in a highly erosional situation is, you know, people kind of would not, you try to think of other situations that this kind of ordinance may apply in. If one homeowner puts, you know, bags as far seaward as they can under this ordinance and their neighbors don't, then if that beach erodes, then Councilman Hahn's correct that, you know, you'll start flanking those sandbags. So water will start getting in around them. And we've seen that in other areas. And you can see that with seawalls, even over at Sullivan's Island. You can see they start building the, the wing walls to kind of protect from that flanking erosion. So you end up with an island, you know, kind of out trying to protect that upland area. And that's why OCRM, I think, tends to have a very strict definition of that emergency condition that gets it as far landward as they feel they can. It used to be ten feet. They actually just moved it to twenty feet a couple of years ago. Because trying to manage a shoreline where one person puts it way out, one person does nothing, and you have this jagged coast, doesn't really work well with the ocean. And, and, and just kind of the other engineering side is the further out you try to hold the line, if the ocean wants it to be further landward, you're going to have a much harder time. So that's why I think we sent a, a letter or an email several weeks ago saying, you know, we want to put this dune as far landward as possible because that gives it the best chance of protecting itself. So it's, again, it's not impossible, but it needs to be, ideally, it's done in a coordinated effort where there is a continuous line. And it's seen as temporary protection. Again, if, if there wasn't a big project coming in, in a couple of months, I'd be much more hesitant to deal with sandbags because it just, the longer that emergency situation goes on, the more crisis kind of can arise. Knowing that there is this project coming, I do feel better about being able to maintain it through some of those conditions.
Okay.
Would the remedy be that we amend this to say that the sandbags must be twenty feet from the nearest structure and just set that as the limit? Because we know at that point we will come in with some sort of remedy for the situation because that meets OCRM requirements.
Well, that's current conditions.
We don't need to do anything for that to occur because that's already the case. What we're trying to do is to give homeowners some, I mean, look, I've talked to numerous people down there, and they sat there watching the ocean come in and destroy their property and felt helpless. And it was, they were, you know, they were obstructed by our city ordinance of the two hundred and fifty feet to do anything. I think this is temporary. It's only until the cavalry gets here, which is the big, the big nourishment project. And I think it's pretty minimal risk to be able to allow homeowners the opportunity. I think, frankly, it's pretty, it's pretty bureaucratic, a lot of stuff in it. And I don't know how many people are actually going to do it. But I think we should give them the opportunity to do it if they want to do it.
We've got a motion and a second. Desiree, you want to do roll call? Vote.
Sure.
Sorry. I kind of sprung that. Things should be maybe easier.
All right. How do I start? Start with you. Councilmember Bogosian?
Aye.
Councilmember Hahn?
Nay.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Streitman?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Nay.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Mayor Pounds?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Good conversation. Item B, discussion of potential channel realignment, shore management project at Breach Inlet and other long-term solutions for erosion control. John, you were kind of going there from asking a question. Stephen, do you want to give some commentary before we have questions coming at you? Or what's your preference?
Sure. So we just recently initiated work on the next round of large-scale nourishment project planning. And that includes a couple of things. One would be a potential sand transfer project at the east end, which is more of a medium-term solution to help prolong the life of that east end project. And the other effort would be permitting for the next offshore project. And that would include consideration for both ends of the island, the east end and the breach inlet area. And that, we had already kind of planned on last year. We, we've been kind of building up to that. A lot of the work associated with the south end will be looking for potential sand sources. Now, ideally, just like we've talked about, sand is coming from an offshore or an outside the system place. So you're increasing the sand volume on the beach. By shifting it around, you may temporarily fix problems, but you're not adding sand to your bank account essentially. So in the ideal world, you can find a close source of very nice sand that you can pump onto the beach. But one of the alternatives we can look at is a potential channel realignment project, which would be, would involve essentially the same level of permitting as an offshore project. That channel is seaward of the Colreg's line, which means you have to have an ocean-certified dredge. So that means that project will essentially be, you know, an offshore project. As far as cost, mobilization cost, you're looking at several million dollars of bringing in that dredge. But it's a feasible project. You know, I did a real rough calculation of potential volumes. And a channel five hundred feet wide and about fifteen feet deep gets you about half a million yards of sand. In most cases, channel realignment projects are done to benefit a downdrift beach because they're typically the ones eroding. So, you know, if Sullivan's was saying, hey, we need to realign the channel and restore the, the breach inlet shoreline on their side, that, that kind of makes sense in a way. The theory behind the project would make sense here. But what I can't tell you is, and we can do a lot of modeling, you know, hydrodynamic modeling of coastal systems like that is a little sketchy. But dredging that material, you could put, put that material back on the beach. So you're, you're doing a nourishment project, building your beach out. But that material eventually is going to shift back into that channel. That channel process is going to repeat itself every several years. And it looks like that's happening every, you know, three to five, six years on its own. So I showed you in 2001, there was a channel that was cut much closer to Isle of Poms. So we'd basically be mimicking that project. But that might happen over the next year or two anyway, as we're permitting this project. The difference is you're not physically moving that material back to the, the beach system or the Isle of Poms side. So it's something that's feasible, but it's not near as direct of a benefit as bringing in new sand from offshore and rebuilding it that way. It's probably a little cheaper than an offshore project because the pumping distance is a lot smaller, but you still would have a pretty significant mobilization cost. You would run into more environmental concerns because it's an inlet system that's essential fish habitat. So NOAA and Marine Fisheries Service and Fish and Wildlife would tend to frown upon that type of project. But it's something we can look at and look at in a little bit more detail.
And Stephen, I mean, can you speak a little bit? Because you do, y'all do some of this work down at Kiowa, right?
Yes.
I know it's a different situation, different setup, but just speak to that a little bit.
Kiowa and Captain Sam's inlet separates Kiowa and Sullivan's Seabrook Island. And that inlet migrates about three hundred feet every year towards Seabrook Island. So as it gets closer to Seabrook, it actually starts to erode the Seabrook side. So Seabrook pays to relocate that inlet. And that's actually cutting it through the spit. So it's not really a channel dredging. It's actually cutting the spit off. If you were to dig through the high ground and take out about six houses down there, that would be an equivalent project. Not recommending that. But, but this is, and same in theory, is you're managing the sediment supply to that down-coast beach.
Stephen, did I hear you say, though, that a potential, a project of that scope would potentially help Sullivan's as well?
If you were to...
And the reason I'm asking is, should we, should we align with them to see about if it, I mean, like, it may not make sense at all doing it. But if it did, if, if we join together to do something?
Yeah. I, I think the only way it would directly benefit them is by placing material directly, not allowing the waves to do it because it's going to happen regardless to them anyway. They're actually going to benefit from the core project, too. I think about a hundred and fifty thousand yards is going to be placed over there in, in a couple of areas. And then they're going to manually move that material along that breach inlet shoreline. With this project coming up with the core, I think, I, I think that's going to provide a very substantial amount of sand that should, you know, really restore the beach for a long time. I mean, I'm thinking, hopefully for the next, you know, ten-year period. That, that's more sand than we've lost over the past ten years.
Well, that, that's good to hear. Because my whole point of bringing this up is if we put that sand on there and we've got the same erosion character just going on, how long does that core sand really last before it goes away, too? And that's my whole point of bringing it up. The root cause appears to be the channel flow. And if we don't correct that, then we're just going to continue to have that erosion.
And, and even with the core project, it's important to, you know, remember, this is an unstabilized inlet erosion zone. So there's nothing outside of a hard structure like a jetty will, you know, permanently fix that area. Whether it's the core project, whether it's a channel realignment, it may provide relief for a couple of years. But then at some point, the inlet dynamics are going to take over regardless of how much sand you place out. And we, and we see the same thing at the east end, that, you know, some areas, we put six hundred feet of beach, and in two or three years, three hundred feet of that was gone. In other areas, you know, almost everything is still there. And we can't tell you exactly when that's going to happen or what areas are going to be affected. But we can tell you it's going to change for sure.
Other questions, comments? Helpful. Thank you. So is there really a next step? I mean, it would cost to take any next steps. I know. Do we wait and see what the Army Corps project does?
That would be my recommendation is, you know, let's try to get as much sand in the sandbags out over the next three weeks. You know, monitor that area very closely through this core project. And then as we approach the core project, look at the beach condition. And if it's, decide what level of effort the city would want to make, whether to shift some of that core sand around, whether it's up into the dune to reestablish some dune... it's up into the dune to reestablish some dunes, if it's still in an escarped area, potentially shifting a, just a quantity of sand to the beach, it's kind of a harvesting, you know, project, redistribution project. And, you know, as we get into knowing when that project's actually going to start, then we can kind of give you an idea of what we would recommend based off the conditions at that time.
So timing, Steve. I think you were talking that the core might get going early next year. Is this something we, they, they would come and present, or you'd present, or whoever? Just give us the details of what that project is all about and how they're going to go about it. Is that something we would be expecting to get on calendar in December, November?
We're planning a public meeting for November. We're looking at the logistics of the location to hold that meeting, availability of the Army Corps staff to do it, but our goal is second week of November, and we would invite the, the, the public, invite the property owners that are along that stretch, particularly those front beach where we would need to secure temporary easements from, obviously with city council, and the idea would be to have a presentation by the core about the project, the scope, a participation from Stephen to talk a little bit about the dynamics of this area, and then talk about the need for an easement. So that, that is being worked on right now.
Okay, great.
Stephen, thank you. Lot of hours, I know, along with our staff, so thank you for that. Item C, executive session. Mac, I think you may have an update for us here.
Why am I, do I need to leave?
No.
No, you're good. And the, the update is essentially the lawyers that are representing the city in that case thought they may have an update for us tonight. They don't, they're not here, so we really don't, we don't need to go into executive session to discuss it. There's, the update is, there's no update.
Mac, again, you rise to the occasion. There'll be no further business.
Motion two, adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?